We can't stop the.
Oh, yeah.
It's on my kitchen counter.
We're gonna do infrastructure first.
Oh. Okay, infrastructure?
Yes. Okay, welcome. It is five thirty on January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and we will call the, call to order the Infrastructure Certex Oversight Committee meeting to order for the Village of Toquesta, Toquesta, Florida. Meg, will you do roll call, please?
Sure. Chair Leslie Natcher.
Here.
Vice Chair Theresa Machio.
Here.
Member Elizabeth Shauer.
Here.
Member Sherry Ambrose.
Here.
Member Jean McElhany.
Here.
Have you been drinking?
Yes, actually, I have been. I don't drink, Liz.
Marissa Theory.
Yeah.
Barbara Valdez. J.R. Gaylord.
Thank you. That's serious.
Thank you. We can have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All, any opposed? Agenda is approved. And if we have all had the, a chance to look at the, the meeting minutes from the last meeting of December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, are there any changes or adjustments?
I have a question.
Okay.
Why are the minutes so short? There's no, if you look at the planning and zoning from December, this one, I mean, there was questions, discussion, and on the LPA, it's, the minutes are just so short that it, it looks like everything is rubber stamped and there was no dialogue between the committee. That's my question, sorry.
We can beef them up if, if that's what the board desires.
We have this discussion all the time where I'm the board president and my, and I was told minutes are supposed, supposed to be just the basics.
Yes.
Not discussion.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the real way they're supposed to be. But I guess you can change that.
You.
I noticed that also, and we shortened ours, too.
But if somebody is doing, this is a local government agency, and if somebody is doing a public records request and they want minutes from a meeting, it looks like with the planning and zoning, we rubber stamped everything in December, there was no discussion, we discussed things on the infrastructure and at the LPA. There needs to be some type of a dialogue in there so that somebody can get a drift of where we're coming because not everybody watches us on the thing. So that's my, otherwise I make a motion to approve the minutes because there's nothing in there to oppose, so.
Well, the important stuff is in there. You noticed? Except not every discussion, right? I know, I, we go through that all the time.
It's important to establish a record if there's gonna be, you know, litigation related to a project, if it's controversial, so we'll try and be mindful of that, like at the last meeting, there was some back and forth about that project. We'll, we'll beef up, especially those type of discussions.
Be, you know, it's, yeah, sorry, it's called CYA, so.
Okay.
I make a motion then to approve the minutes of December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting minutes are approved. Okay, our agenda item today is the discussion of the two thousand and twenty-three Village Certex Expenditure Report, and Mr. Chambers, if you'd like to come to the podium, please.
Just have a brief presentation on the screen for you. I'm Doug Chambers, Public Works Director, and happy to be here tonight to report on Certex expenditures for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. Meg is pulling up, up on the screen there. We, um, we had a few projects in two thousand and twenty-four. One project was Country Club Community, Meg, do you need this?
I need this.
We can wait so it's not a distraction. Something's open there. I think you have to close that first screen. Yeah, that one, you have to close that. No, we did rehearse this earlier. Did you know how that works? I can tell you it was a busy year. It was a busy year, a lot of projects throughout the village, um, a lot of needed projects, infrastructure projects, roadway projects, drainage projects. And the thing to understand about when we're, we're planning these projects, uh, these are, a lot of these projects are planned five, minimum of five years out. Unless there's something specific that's happening, uh, maybe we had a water main break and we need to go to a s- specific area and work on a roadway, but, um, we keep a running five-year, um, long-term plan. So, for instance, when we're working on our roads, we go out every year and we assess all the roads in the village that we're responsible for maintaining. As you all know, we have little pockets in Toquesta that are unincorporated, we're not responsible, your tax dollars don't go towards, uh, the improvement of those roadways, but we're aware of those. And if there is a, a road within the village limits, uh, that's in, unincorporated Palm Beach County, we're having that dialogue with Palm Beach County as well so that they are addressing their roads within, uh, Toquesta limits.
I'm sorry, would you see if this slide will change even without a presentation?
No, that's okay. We, we can do without it. You're all right. I just, personally, I like the pictures.
Yeah.
You say a picture's worth a thousand words.
Words, yes, they are.
But we can, we can move ahead without that. Is that right? Okay, don't worry about it. Did they get a copy of this in their agenda? With the picture, the PowerPoint?
It has it on the, on line.
Online? Okay, so you can always go back and reference and look at these pictures as well.
The, the PowerPoint isn't, is not on their agenda.
Oh, it's not?
No.
Okay. But anyway, um, so on an annual basis, I personally go out, sometimes we use, um, some of our partners from our engineering firms, um, our staff, and we identify, um, where we need improvements, right? Sometimes it's just a road that's aged, it's old, it hasn't been, you know, paved in twenty-plus years, but typically what happens, um, we have something infrastructure under the road that's caused a problem. You know, what we don't see eventually catches us, right? We have, um, communication companies, you know, Comcast and Verizon and AT&T, we have a sanitary sewer pipe, we have water distribution, we have stormwater, we have Florida Power and Light, and whether they're putting in new infrastructure or they've had a fault, sometimes it affects our roadways and/or our sidewalk. So we work closely, I work closely with all of those different entities, um, to make sure before we go and identify we're gonna put, um, Certex money or capital money into a project, we make sure that we've looked at everything that you don't see as well, right? Everything that's underground, all your underground infrastructure. We don't wanna go and spend a hundred thousand dollars, a half million dollars on a road, and then Loxahatchie River District.
Someone digs it up.
Is gonna be digging up the road because they have a leak on the sanitary sewer pipe, or Florida Power and Light is going to be driving in some new hardened poles in the area. So we're very conscious, very aware of that, and make sure we're communicating with all those different entities. So again, it's a, it's a long-term plan, um, but on an annual basis, for instance, now we'll be coming into the new budget season in February, March, we'll start working on, uh, next year's fiscal budget now, and I'll go out and I'll assess all the roads and take a look at what our recommendations were, uh, in the next fiscal year and see if we need to tweak anything or make any changes based on, um, existing conditions. So that's, that's how we sort of get to, um, put our money in different pockets, right? It's not just random. There's a lot of work that goes behind that.
You should be good now.
Yeah? Okay. Oh, there you go.
There we go.
So there was a lot of noise, but now we got it. So if you look at the first page here, uh, the Public Works Department provided oversight for nine hundred and sixty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars of Certex funds. Those are the projects that I was directly in charge of. And I highlighted, excuse me, I highlighted those projects, the first one on there is Country Club Community Roads. It was a combination of, um, not only, sometimes we just don't go and just repave a road, right? There's some other factors that, that come into play as well. And these roads in the country club, if anybody happens to live in the country club, we had a lot of issues twenty-some-odd years ago, Loxahatchie River District put in a sanitary sewer system.
Yeah.
And over the years, that road really deteriorated. And it's a comp, it's a lot of things that, that come into play there, it's not just, it's not that it was necessarily a poor job, right? We live on top of the water, so you have that constant water moving back and forth in all directions, pushing up against the road. You dig four feet in the ground, you're in the water. So you constantly have that tidal surge pushing up against your road, right? We live in Florida, so what do you have? You have that sun baking down on the road, drying out the, the top layer of the asphalt on the road as well. But what we saw over a period of time, the road really flattened out, and we had serious depressions and a lot of edge of road cracking. So we spent a lot of time, um, preparing for this project to see what was going on with, with the roadway, what was causing these defects. We did some actual core sampling in the road about, uh, twenty-six, twenty-seven core samples throughout the country club to see what the road base actually looks like under the asphalt, right? Is it falling apart? What's causing this deterioration? We had Loxahatchie River District take a camera through all their pipe and televise their pipe to see, so if you have a pipe in the road and you have a leak, right, in that pipe, what eventually happens, it washes out the sand in the base, and then eventually you have a depression in the road. So they televise all their pipe as well. So we did a lot, a lot of those things in the last year and a half in preparation for that first project there. Now, we only spent, I'd say only, a hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars out of the infrastructure money, the Certex money, but that project itself was totaled about seven hundred and ten thousand dollars. Let's see here. This is just a nice picture in the country club, uh, we actually took the top layer of the road off and we're adding new, um, asphalt on top of the road. These are the roads that we milled and paved, uh, Yacht Club, Palmetto, Fairview East, West, Fair Place, Golf View Drive, Club Place, Golf Place, Bunker, View, Yacht Club, Pine Tree, and, uh, El Portal. And the last three roads on there, what we, what we were doing there, you see, we have the exits next to the milling and paving, those roads had been paved previously in the previous year. But what we like to do, you'll see around the village in, in many areas, our roads are very narrow, and, uh, very small village, right? The roads are very narrow, and we have larger vehicles, right? We have construction throughout the village, um, heavy construction equipment, cranes, tractor trailers, um, you know, boats.
Moving trucks.
And everybody cuts the corner, and what do they do? They tear up the road, they tear up the right-of-way that you all maintain in front of your property. So what we do in those areas, we put a flush concrete curb around that corner, I'm sure you've seen it around the village now, everywhere we go where we have that issue, we put in concrete in there, which continues to allow water to flow off the road into the right-of-way, right? And it also protects the edge of road. It protects the road and it protects the right-of-way. So we're gonna get those deep potholes, and eventually when that edge of road starts falling apart and cracking, you eventually lose your whole road. I don't know if anybody's been down Point Drive recently, just west of the bridge?
Yeah.
Can I see all those columns along Point Drive?
I saw those.
It's a perfect example of the edge of road. You didn't have a swell there, right, where the water could run off the road, so it sits right on the edge of the road, and eventually, you know, folks parking in there and trucks parking, and it just cracks the edge of road, it just continues all the way into the roadway. You start to get water underneath the asphalt and it literally eats the entire roadway. So we're doing that as well, um, and I would say ninety percent of the road is where we need, we need those curves to protect the road. Let's see here, the second project on the list was, um, El Portal Road, and that was also, um, a combination of road improvements, swell improvements to get the water off the road, and also.
Sidewalks.
Connectivity, some sidewalk. So if you look at that picture on the left-hand side, that's in-progress picture of El Portal Drive, if you're looking west, we, excuse me, we added that sidewalk for connectivity out into the community, we added a, a grassy swell where water could run off into the grass, and then we milled and paved the entire roadway, and obviously the picture on the right is the finished product. So we had four hundred and two thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars went towards that project. That project, the total cost of that project was just under a million dollars. And that's just a little recap of the area on El Portal Drive. We milled and paved all those roads as well, stormwater improvements, swell improvements, a lot of vegetation, um, clearing, if you're familiar with that area, when you, when you go, when you go into El Portal Drive and you go around that bend towards Golf View and River Drive, there was so much vegetation out in the right-of-way, just accumulating over years, and we cleared all of that out. It's in, it's important for, for everybody to know as well, so whether you live in Toquesta or whatever city you live in, right, the county, the city, the village has a right-of-way. So the code calls for the homeowner or the property owner to maintain that property to the road. But if you look at your property survey, you see your property actually ends before the road, and it's different throughout the village, um, and, and every county as well. But for the most part, um, there's about fourteen feet of right-of-way where all your underground infrastructure goes, you know, that's, that's village main, that's not village maintained, but village-owned property, right? But that's where you have your, your power, your Florida Power and Light, your sanitary sewer, your water distribution, you need a place where you can run all those utilities and have full access twenty-four-seven to those utilities, right? So we can provide those services to the community. So wherever we can, uh, we're working on a lot of projects now, when we, we don't wanna just go and mill and pave a road or just put in a piece of sidewalk, we wanna make sure we're protecting that right-of-way. Not only is it in our best interest, but it's in your best interest because you need all of those services to get to your home, right? And, and you'll see over the years, there was a lot of planting and just really, um, no guidance in the past of what happened in the right-of-way, and folks would just plant right out to the road. And I get it, sometimes it looks nice, right? It can look nice, but there's a reason that that's protected and, and we maintain that. So anytime we have a project there, or if you're a homeowner, right, the village code requires the homeowner or property owner to maintain that property to the road, right? So you're cutting that grass, trimming those hedges to the road, uh, but if you're gonna do any work in that, in that right-of-way, a permit is required. And so it comes up, comes to, uh, Public Works and Utilities Department, who'll review the plans, review specifications, the project, whatever it is you're looking to do, and whether we can allow that to move forward, or it's, it's in conflict with the underground utilities in the village right-of-way. And sometimes it's just a matter, you know, you see, we don't have a lot of, um, catch basin, stormwater catch basins to catch water, right? And so we rely heavily on water getting off the road into those grassy areas and those swells, so we're working together with the Utilities Department to rebuild or build swells throughout the community where we can stack and store that water, where it absorbs into the ground like it should. We don't wanna take all of that water as well and just dump it into the, uh, in the Loxahatchie River, that's not the goal as well, and Loxahatchie doesn't, uh, doesn't allow that as well. Okay, so the next project on the list here was a really nice project, it's ongoing right now, it's Remembrance Park, and we have some partial funding there for a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars out of the Certex money. That project is a one-point-one-million-dollar project. Uh, we started that project back in May, um, we're about eight months into the project, I'm on that project every day overseeing that project. What I, what I really love about this project, you know, the village has had this, uh, had this property for many, many years, and at one point they were trying to sell the property. And I thought it was great that the village council had decided, let's put it to the residents to see what they want, it was the last piece of property that the village owned that was sort of unoccupied, right? There are no buildings, no structures, just vacant land. What are the residents, what would the residents like to see with this property? So that was really nice, great idea that they put it out to the residency, what do the residents, what would they like to see in, in your community right here? And this is what you all came up with. So, um, we, we're gonna be about, I'd say in May, we reach substantial completion of the project. We're getting there now, the hardest part of the project, uh, has already been completed, uh, drainage structures and, and really grading the property. The, the property was overbuilt, which would take water to the neighboring, uh, homes, and so we had to grade that property, we had something like two hundred and fifty-some-odd trucks.
Oh, yeah.
Removing, you know, dirt on that property.
It was really nice going down on Seabrook.
Yes.
But I do have to tell you, I was at Eleven Garden Street earlier this afternoon, and it's, it's not finished, but I mean, it's absolutely stunning, I mean, you could see the trail, I mean, I was, I was really impressed.
Yeah, the aggregate path is gone.
And she's very happy, I mean, she faces it every day.
Yeah.
The only di, the only thing she doesn't like is the sand, and I said, don't worry, it'll get, so, you know, once the soil, it'll be, but it's, it's really looking good.
Yeah, I was surprised, um, uh, I was surprised to see how much sugar sand is on that property. I really expected to see more of a blend, uh, of soil, but it is, um, one hundred percent sugar sand. Um, but yeah, all those areas will be sodded, uh, there'll be, uh, Butterfly Garden, there's a couple pavilions in the picture there, we're building, um, two sitting areas, a walking trail, just a nice passive park, and, you know, staff and, and the council is working on the next phase of that project, I don't know if you realize that, that actually connects all the way through to Riverside Drive.
Riverside Drive.
And so they're working on the, on the planning of the next phase and what that might look like and, and funding for that project. But this one is underway, and a portion of this Certex money went towards this project, again, it's a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Going the wrong way, okay. And then we have here is Toquesta Park Pickleball and Tennis Courts, uh, we spent twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars, made a simple enhancement, uh, for the folks playing out there, I don't, anybody play pickleball here? Now, so you're out there every morning?
Well, there was a big snake.
On the court?
It was the biggest snake I've ever seen while we were playing.
Really?
Came right through the courts. I would've been out of there.
Do we know that it was?
I haven't been back to that particular court. It was gray and smooth. I ran for my car.
The nice thing about the park, it is protected, and, and also, you know, there are areas where you can go to the park, like this pickleball court, um, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not here to talk about pickleball, but I can already talk about pickleball. It's the fastest-growing sport in the United States or the world right now. Uh, just another time, I guess, before it's in the Olympics, but anyway, they really needed, uh, easy access, ADA access, um, safe access in and around the court, so if you look where I highlighted that, around the north side and the west side, we extended the sidewalk, if you, if you look, uh, where, uh, where the existing sidewalk is, we just connected it to the existing sidewalk and just made it user-friendly for folks playing on, on, on the court to get on off the court without disrupting other players, having to walk across their court, they can go out and, and walk across the sidewalk prior to the sidewalk there, you know, you had to walk in the sugar sand, which is, um, you know, potentially, uh, dangerous as well, especially fatigue coming off the pickleball court and just trying to get back to your car, right?
Yeah.
So again, we spent twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars on the sidewalk extension at Toquesta Park. Okay, sidewalk improvements, Seabrook Road. So we also have on top of the, um, road improvements on an annual basis, we also go throughout the village and we identify where we need to improve our sidewalks. I hope you've all seen how much sidewalk we've replaced throughout the village.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, my goodness.
I started on that about five, six years ago. And we have all of Toquesta Drive done, Country Club Drive, um, the villages in the intercoastal, Seabrook Road here now, north and south side of, uh, Toquesta Drive, I mean, yeah, north and side, north and south side of Toquesta Drive. And sometimes, um, we don't have to go in and replace all of the sidewalk, right? We're not there to pull out sidewalk where there's nothing wrong with the sidewalk. ADA requirements, American Disabilities Act requires the sidewalks a minimum of four foot wide, village code calls for five feet. That doesn't mean we go and we just rip out all the four-feet sidewalk, right? That's not a requirement, but if we're in the area and there's damaged sidewalk and there's a percentage of that sidewalk that's coming out, we then have to go and replace that sidewalk and increase it to five feet. So a lot of these areas, we've done that. This here, the picture on the right there is behind Gallery Grill, uh, Gallery Square, and, um, all that curb was damaged, all that sidewalk was damaged, we fixed all the landscaping in there, and we, this, so this is, um, north of Toquesta Drive, and we went up and down both sides of the road within the village's limits, replaced any of the damaged sidewalk, raved sidewalk, um, if you look at, uh, on the picture on the right where they have that yellow mat, that's ADA mat for, um, uh, which is a requirement as well.
So I don't usually ask tangential questions, but I'd like to ask you a tangential question. So she raised all the utility wires and cables and thinking about work that's being done. I've noticed that at this intersection, there is an awful lot of cable that has been hanging on the poles for a very long time. Is that something that's going to be dealt with soon, or do you know what that is? It looks like telephone or telecoms radio cable to me, it's not, I don't believe it's FPL wire.
Yeah, I could get into that, um, I'm just gonna tell you, that's the last item on here.
Okay.
We replaced two thousand linear feet of concrete sidewalk.
You skipped the skate park.
Oh, I'll jump back to that. Oh, I skipped the skate park and the, uh, defibrillators.
Yeah.
Because that wasn't a project that Public Works.
Oh, okay.
Um, but I can tell you, we did, uh, and I'll get back to your question. We did, uh, demo the old skate park equipment, that was extremely dangerous and hazardous.
Yes.
My staff and myself were out there, we demoed that, we took all the scrap metal there.
It looks nice now, yeah.
So we could, uh, recoup some funds and just scrapping all the metal.
Oh, nice.
And then the Parks and Rec Director had budgeted to replace what you see there now, which.
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, I, I go past there every day and that park is, is, is being utilized, which is nice to see. So again, I was, I didn't oversee that project, and that's the only reason I didn't mention it, and the other one was the Fire Department, the two defibrillators, um, I don't know if Jay was gonna add anything to those two items on there, but, um, you know, they're on the list as well, I just didn't oversee those two.
Okay, so let's go back to Sherri's question.
Yes, okay, so that sort of wraps up where we spent the money.
Yeah.
Everybody, anybody have any questions on any of those items?
No, board questions.
Other than the wires?
If, if you don't have to answer, I was just curious if you knew what one of them.
No, exactly, yeah, I, that's AT&amp;T.
Yes, okay.
Ah, okay.
And so if, I don't know how many folks have had FPL and Bowman Consulting knock on your door about undergrounding cabling here throughout the village, so a couple years back, we were fortunate to get on a pilot program at no cost to the village or the residents, and just in our persistence with Florida Power and Light and our relationships, we jumped on a pilot program, we put, um, overhead power utility cables underground in a small section in the country club. We kept pushing and pushing, when are you coming back, right? So Florida Power and Light has a, a thirty-year plan, thirty, forty-year plan, to underground all of their infrastructure, uh, throughout the state of Florida. Now, that is not necessarily your power distribution lines, your main power distribution lines, when they come out of the substations and they're on the concrete poles, but it's all the lateral cables that go and feed your communities and your house, right? So that's what they're doing, we're fortunate now to get on another project at no cost to the village or the residents. FPL is coming through here again, and it's gonna impact over six hundred homeowners, um, Country Club, Seabrook, Toquesta Pines, Riverside Drive, there are a few pockets, and these pockets that they've identified, there's some issues there, right? And so when you're undergrounding as well, it's, it's not an easy task, right? Because if you all live on the same block and we have to underground in your community, well, somebody has to get a transformer and a junction box on the property, and well, we need a buy-in from everybody, right? Because it's also your property, right? There's gonna be, there's, you have to sign an easement agreement, so you really need buy-in from everybody in the community. So FPL is working towards that. When are they gonna come back again and continue that? I don't know, we'll continue pushing them, and we've been pretty successful doing that. And our understanding is, it is based on, you know, so how do they decide to come to your community? It's based on power quality issues, poor power quality issues. So I tell everybody, anybody should share with your friends, if you're having an issue at your house with your power, you have outages, you come home, your clocks are flashing, your microwave is flashing, any power quality issues you have, call FPL. I know it's a pain in the neck to try to get them on the phone, but they document that, and they document that, and they document that. And sometimes they may just use that documentation on calls received from residents of power quality issues. That's part of that formula. So that's what they're currently doing. The problem that they run into, and then you all run into. The problem that they run into and then you all run into is the communication companies. FPNL cannot mandate or dictate how or when or why those other cables, communication cables, come off the poles. So what you'll see a lot of time when FPNL is done and they've put their power lines on the ground, they cut the pole at the top. They're done, they're off the pole, and now it's the utility company. But that's another whole project and tens of millions of dollars. And FPNL, you know, is, is sort of at a crossroads with, uh, with the, you know, the comp companies to get off the pole and go underground. There's no, there's nothing in their power that they can, they can actually get them to do that. So you may see a lot of your power utility lines go underground eventually, but you're still gonna see a pole there with your communication cable. Now, I do know that, um, AT&T and Verizon are working throughout the community and undergrounding as well in a lot of different areas. So they are working, there's, literally, there's still some copper, old twisted pair of copper underground providing service to some of the homeowners. And, and they are replacing that with more reliable fiber optic cable. The more they do that, the more you'll see them come off the poles. But, you know, from a main distribution hub, a lot of times you'll still see that cable in the air. And sometimes there's, there's no room in the right of way. If, if you could only see a map of what's underground, the infrastructure that's underground that you don't see, you'd be amazed. You don't see it and you don't realize it and say, well, why can't they just put that cable on the ground? Well, there's a high voltage cable there, there's a viral cable there, there's a sanitary sewer line there, there's a water distribution pipe there, and a stormwater pipe there, and now you're trying to squeeze this fiber optic cable in there? We had a, uh, you know, on that project I showed you before on El Portal Drive, this one here, not only did we repair the road, build the swell, build the sidewalk, but we put a stormwater pipe, fifteen and eighteen inch stormwater pipe in the right of way. Excuse me. In and around. Excuse me, getting over a little cold.
Need a drink of water?
I'm good. So, um, but what a bear to get that pipe in the ground without damaging existing utilities. So that's one of the other challenges. So whenever we can, we're always in favor of undergrounding, but again, you can't force somebody to go underground.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no more board comments, um, I'll open the floor to public comments. Marco, would you please state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, I'm Marco Valdez, one oh two Beechwood Trail. Um, the question I just have is, um, what's your target balance for this? You know, it looks like we spent quite a lot this year compared to the revenues and previous years, it's gone down to sixty thousand. It seems to be hovering around four or five hundred thousand. Is there a statute or something that governs that, uh, balance?
Sure, so that's a, that's probably more of a finance question, but essentially, we've had a lot of money in reserve that we've been carrying for a few years, right, Doug? And I think this year we had some big projects and I think, I think Doug wanted to expend some of that, that money that was in reserve. Might be a good time to explain that, that the SRTAX will actually be going away. It sunsets in twenty twenty-five, I believe.
So there's twenty twenty-five, there's no more money coming in?
Yeah, we just won't get any new money in. I'm sure there's some kind of deadline for when you have to spend it by. The counties actually, they haven't done it yet, but there's talk that they're gonna do a transportation SRTAX to replace the infrastructure SRTAX, um, which is why we're doing a mobility plan right now. Um, or we're gonna start doing a mobility plan to start getting, um, mobility projects that we can use for, um, for that transportation SRTAX money, but the county hasn't rolled it out just yet. Um, but yeah, Doug, this, I think next year might be the last year of SRTAX meeting, maybe one more year after that, but.
Twenty twenty-five, it sunsets.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
Okay, any more public comments? Okay, we'll close the floor to public comments and any, any more board comments? Okay, and so all we're doing is just recommending approval of the.
Of the SRTAX report?
Okay.
I make a mo- motion to, well, money is spent, but for approval of the SRTAX. Sorry, the SRTAX, yeah, the SRTAX. You do, you do a great job, Doug. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And you respond very quickly.
I tried to.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second?
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the recommendation passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And.
Thank you.
We can have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. And Dylan, can we just go ahead with the planning zone?
Yeah, P and Z next.
Okay. Okay, welcome. It is, um, six oh six PM on January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, and we will call the Planning and Zoning Board Meeting of Tequesta, Florida to order. Uh, Meg, will you take roll call, please?
Of course. Leslie Dasher.
Here.
Teresa Maggio.
Here.
Elizabeth Shauer.
Here.
Cherry Ambrose.
Here.
Dean Mickeldami.
Here.
Marisa Thieris.
Here.
Marco Valdez.
Here.
Jared Gaylord.
Thank you. And, um, can we have an approval of the agenda, tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. And has everybody had a minute, moment to look at the previous meeting minutes for December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four? And are there any changes or adjustments?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
For December sixteenth, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the meeting, approval of the meeting minutes is approved. And we do have one agenda item tonight, SPM six dash zero zero two four, application from Shaw Properties, Inc. for a minor site plan modification for new paint colors on an existing thirteen thousand, one hundred forty square foot building in the C two zoning district.
Chair, this item is quasi-judicial in nature. Therefore, I need to swear you in if you plan to give testimony regarding this item. If the applicant is here this evening and plans to speak on this item, I need to swear you in. Could stand at this time, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm under penalty of perjury in the laws of the state of Florida to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Very good. At this point, I'd ask any member of the boards that have had any ex parte communications regarding this application to disclose it at this time. Okay, thank you.
I do drive by there, though.
You all do.
I mean, a lot of us are on US one a lot. Now that the bridge is open.
Yeah, that's true.
Absolutely.
Now the traffic's the wrong way. Sorry.
Now, Megan, will you be presenting this?
Do you want me to start?
Please, yes.
So I'm gonna present to you two twenty-two South US Highway One, it's a minor site plan modification. Plaza two twenty-two is located at two twenty-two South US Highway One. It's located in the C two zoning district and the US one highway overlay. The applicant wishes to change the color of the plaza from a pink palette to a more neutral aesthetic. This requires a minor site plan modification for section twenty-two fifty-three, enabling the Planning and Zoning Board to grant final approval on aesthetic modifications to exterior that are not accompanied by other site plan modifications. Here we have our subject location. Obviously, you can see it in the middle there, right off of US one. Here is the location in the overlay. The checkered boxes are the US one overlay, and then the red is the C two zoning. Here is the current condition of the property with its perfectly pink palette. And here is the elevation with the proposed colors. Here's side by side for you. The wrought iron trim work on the facade is also going to get touched up when they do this, so they're going for a tricorn black. The proposed trim will be the interface tan and the proposed building will be the allure and white. Now, neighboring buildings, part of what you're reviewing is for harmony with the surrounding area. So to the south, we have this very black, modern building. When you compare it with the neutral tones and the wrought iron black facade that they are proposing, I think they're complementary. And then to the north, and kind of an extreme, they have the bunkhouse with the very coastal colors and a lovely palette. But I think the tan works next to it, um, remaining complementary. Criteria for review, you're going to be looking at harmony with other buildings, harmony with surroundings, facades, methods of design, inappropriate building styles, garage design, forms, and the use of exterior colors. Thank you.
Is the applicant going to speak?
The applicant is, is here. Um, I don't know. Did you intend to give a presentation?
Other than pictures, um, and then I guess.
If, if you'll come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
I'm a bad example. I am so sorry. Uh, the applicant did bring in paint colors and then we have these.
And, um, Meg, I'm not sure if they got the, just the comparative colors, which really does give an indication of the old colors with the new colors.
I'll pull that picture up for you.
So, um, I have three copies here.
If you'll, if you'll state your name and address for us for the record.
Karen Soudan.
I'm sorry, you need to speak into the microphone. I can't hear you.
My name is Karen Soudan.
Thank you.
My business address is two 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 South US Highway One.
Thank you.
Tequesta.
I got that.
You got that. And this is actually this, I guess. Right?
So here you can see the trim.
Yeah.
And she had to reconfigure this setup so you can see how.
Right, that way you can really see it.
So right now it's a pink tone with a peach band. And then the new proposed colors are the, um, the cream on the top, that beige tote band, and then the tote itself.
And is there anything else you'd like us to know? Or is that it?
Other than that, um, yeah, we're just really hoping to improve the color of the building, fresh paint.
Of course, yes.
The wrought iron work is, it's just, it's, it doesn't look great. I think it was painted maybe over twenty years ago and it's just really, really, really time, so.
Does the board have any questions for the applicant? No? Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And, uh, uh, I can open the floor to public comment? Okay, Maria, if you'll give us your. If you'll give us your name and full address, please, for the record?
Marisa Thieris, I live in the Country Club. Um, I had two comments. First, um, I generally support the new paint scheme. Actually, could you leave that picture up for me? Um, I was wondering, in the trim, had you considered maybe a white, and I'll, I'll dress you through the board, of like lighter color? And just looking around the village, a lot of places that have gone, including our fire station, um, that have kind of a beige neutral color, have a closer to white, but not like bright white as their trim. I guess I might have liked to see a little more color, especially given the, um, next door. I don't think anything matches the black glass building, which I regard as a huge mistake aesthetically. Um, so I appreciate that you're doing your best here. Um, and the other request I have is, I know this is not part of this, but, um, in the future, if we could maybe get a new name for the building other than just plaza, I think would be really nice there. But I do like how you have it there and it's not a plastic sign, so I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay, closing the floor to public comments. Any board comments?
Anything's better than the pink.
Mm-hmm.
Exactly. That's, that's what I was thinking.
It really is nice.
It really is nice.
And it's spiffed it up.
So there's, uh, more than one owner. And we have gone back and forth and back and forth with, um, colors. So we, we're gonna go a little bit lighter, but some of the other owners were not happy with that at all. So we felt that that was a nice compromise.
I see.
What was the other colors?
Um, it was a little bit lighter, um, but it was very stark. And we just felt like we wanted something just a little bit more like smoother, softer, and neutral.
Well, it is smoother and.
Pardon?
It, it's just that everybody says, oh, don't forget the pink building. And I go, no, it's the two 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 building.
Right, yeah. And my father built the building back in nineteen seventy-four. And, you know, it's just, it's sentimental, so, you know, we honestly don't have a a wish to change the name of the building.
Yeah.
But that's just personal preference.
Don't you dare. I mean, it's just, I think it's great.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, board comments, please?
I will make a motion to approve the paint color. Do you want me to state the paint colors?
No. Okay, so we have a motion.
I have a motion. Motion to.
Okay, um, we, on the floor, we have a motion to approve SPM six dash zero zero two four. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes.
Can't wait to see the finished product.
Yeah, sure. Definitely brighten it up.
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, if there's no further board comments or staff comments, uh, then we are ready to adjourn?
I make motion to adjourn.
Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. And. Did you want any of your materials on? Okay, so we're ready to start the next meeting?
Jay, do you wanna keep this?
Yes, we'll hold on to that.
You will?
Okay.
Okay, uh.
I guess you should keep that.
Okay, it is, it's six seventeen on January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, and we will now call to order the planning meeting, uh, local planning agency meeting of the Village of Tequesta, Florida. Um, Meg, will you call, do roll call, please?
Sure. Leslie Dasher.
Here.
Teresa Maggio.
Here.
Elizabeth Shauer.
Here.
Cherry Ambrose.
Here.
Dean Mickeldami.
Here.
Marisa Thieris.
Here.
Marco Valdez.
Here.
Jared Gaylord.
Okay, and, um. Okay, we can, uh, are we ready to approve the agenda for tonight?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Okay, the, the agenda is approved. And if you've had a chance to look over the meeting minutes for the local, for the, uh, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-four minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I do have a.
Oh.
Do have a. Something first. Um, I did want to ask about, um, the roll call. Should we be listing like who is not here? It doesn't show like, um.
It should say that. Does it not say on that one?
Not on this one, no.
It says here that I'm absent.
But it doesn't say, um.
It says I'm absent.
Marco, Marco's usually here. Um, it doesn't say Jared was not here.
Marco was there. I think that was an oversight.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll clean that up.
That was my only concern.
Because it says on everything that I was absent, so.
Oh, right, but it doesn't, it doesn't show that Marco was, was here and, and Jared was.
Well, I wasn't here, so I didn't know.
Yeah, well, he's usually here, so.
Yeah, actually, they go sell my odd spot, so.
So that, so that was my only, um, thing I wanted to state about the previous meeting minutes, but, okay, so we're ready.
With that correction, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the previous meeting minutes are approved and we will move on to ordinance one dash twenty-five, an ordinance amending the permissible hours for construction in the village.
Thanks, Chair. I'll read the ordinance by title. This is the first ordinance of two thousand twenty-five. Ordinance zero one two five. This is an ordinance of the Village Council of the Village of Tequesta, Florida, amending the Tequesta Code of Ordinances at chapter thirty, Environmental Control. Article ten, noise, section thirty dash three six one, prohibited noise generally.
noise, Section thirty dash three six one, prohibited noise generally. To revise the permissible hours for construction and other noise generating activity on Saturdays, providing that each and every other section and subsection of Chapter thirty, Environmental Control, Article ten, noise shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, separability clause, authority to codify, effective date, and for other purposes.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is a Building Department ordinance that came at the direction of Village Council. Currently, um, we allow construction, um, between the hours of seven AM and six PM on weekdays and on Saturdays, um, at Village Council's request. Um, the Building Department would like to change that to eight PM on Saturdays and five PM, so, um, an hour late
Eight AM.
Did I say eight PM?
Eight AM.
Eight AM. And five PM. So they'll be moving it back an hour and, uh, finish time up an hour, so cutting it by two hours.
Thank you.
That's, yes, and does, and does the ordinance, you just said it all remains the same, but it says that there will be new, um, construction on Sunday and holidays, does that still say that?
Yes, yeah, that's, that, that will still be in effect. And then there's some other language in there related to, um, vibrations that, that's in there, if you, if you read further down the ordinance.
Right.
Um, they've, they've cleaned that up a little bit, and, and there's a little bit of wiggle room that, that the Building Department, if, if someone's, um, being a little out of control with, with, like, driving piles in, and the vibrations are affecting neighbors, they can, they can take enforcement action on that.
Okay.
That's it.
I, I mean, there's, there are some people that the only day they get to really sleep in is on Saturdays and Sundays, and you got the lawn guy out there at seven in the morning doing the hedge, I mean, it's just, you know, you could kill somebody.
Now, they can still do lawns.
No, not until eight o'clock.
Not until eight o'clock. Oh, eight o'clock, yes.
Eight o'clock in the morning.
But, but anyway, even.
Yeah, it's just they're shortening the hours on Saturday.
Yeah, they're just shortening it to two hours.
But they can still, yeah.
I know I read it, that on Sunday and any holiday as well, that they, um, could not have any noise.
It used to be that if they wanted to do construction on a Sunday, that they needed approval from either the Building Department, yeah.
Sounds right.
They needed to pull a permit or something. Um, I didn't read through the whole ordinance, because when I saw what it was, I was so excited. Um, but, no, it used to be for Sundays, and, uh, yeah, I, I mean, and I, 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 I'm hoping that that's still in effect, somebody needs to pay a risk.
I think, I think ours allows the village manager to do it on Sundays in unique situations. Mo, I think most codes have an allowance for that, so it's, it's probably that.
It might be an extenuating, you know, like after a storm or something like that, that's when we allow people to do things on a
Well, that's what it says.
It, it says if it's public health or safety issue, that they can allow for three days. Yeah, and then they extend it as needed, yeah.
Yep.
And, um, okay, did you have anything more?
That's it.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, we're all happy.
Okay, well, I, I did have, I did have a couple things, um, where it talks about, where it does state in here where you can, they can, of course, that's not really up for what we're covering today, but where it talked about the, if there's emergencies and things like that, that they can extend hours through, through the night. Um, does that, would that include Saturdays night or holidays, or is that?
Unfortunately, this is, because this is building, I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay, it didn't state.
But if it's, but yeah, nothing has changed from what was previously in there.
Okay, so whatever, if, if emergency, then they would allow?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and, um, and then hours for construction, does that mean, like, all permitted work or just noisy work? Like, if you hired a painter and, can painters still come, but?
Good question.
It is the erection, demolition, alteration, or repair of any building?
As long as they're quiet, I guess, nobody
Yeah, so I don't think, I don't think it's, yeah, I don't, well Would become an issue to begin with, if no one was, having a problem with it.
Well, we had, we had, we had a neighbor, um, pressure washing his sidewalk one morning, and then another neighbor complained.
Oh, really?
And, um, and I did have one slight, um, slight thing on, uh, section, uh, it was thirty dash three sixty-one B ten, which is page nine on my document here, and it's just something a little, uh, thinking, I'm trying to be forward-thinking here, it does say, talk about the building official, but then it said if he determines Can we maybe change the language to say he slash she, just in anticipation for down the road?
Yes.
And that's, that's my only
There are female building officials, so that shouldn't be, that should not be in place.
Well, there's a lot of, uh, female construction owners
Everything.
That would be well qualified, so I just thought in preparation, maybe we could change, I think there's just two spots, if we could maybe change that to he slash she, just, just in preparation.
Could I do?
That would be my only
Would we have to make that part of the recommendation? Or can we do that as a disclaimer of staff update? You could do it as a staff We can do that as a staff update.
Okay, so then you
Do you want that as part of the motion?
That's what I just asked, Dylan, it doesn't have, we can do it as part of the staff update, we won't have to make it part of the motion, but if you want to, you're, you're more than welcome to.
I, 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 I think it would be good, be, yeah.
Okay. Okay, if there's no further questions? Uh, we did that already. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Different meeting.
Different meeting.
Two minutes.